Good evening, welcome to the January fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen, meeting of the Raymond Select for it. We have a reasonable agenda this evening. Can we start with the minutes?
Motion to accept December tenth, two thousand and thirteen minutes.
Second.
All in favor? opposed?
Motion to accept December seventeen minutes.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Pass.
Item number three, public hearing, William and Kimberly Hines of Hines or Wines Enter, is it E N C?
Enterprises.
Enterprises Inc., D B A Cafe Sabego, Roosevelt Trail, liquor license renewal. They're not here and has everyone seen this? It's in the E pack.
Yep.
Okay.
Life safety's been done?
Yes, the requisite life safety inspections have been completed. The chief's here, but I believe there were no issues outstanding, no violations. There've been no complaints, no issues related to this business.
No, there's no serious issues, a couple minor ones which will be taken care of forthright.
Yeah, there were four of those, the four listed, yeah.
Right, and he is aware of them and we are working towards that resolution. I have no problem with it, he's been a team player in the past when we've had any issue whatsoever and these issues are not serious.
Okay, so you feel confident that those?
Absolutely.
So I'd like to make a motion to...
You're in the public hearing.
Public, oh, that's right. Anyone in the public has any comment on that? No one wishes to speak on it?
The only bar in town, what do you think?
Close the public hearing.
Yes. Public hearing is closed.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the liquor license renewal for Wines Enterprise Incorporated, D B A Cafe Sabego.
Second.
Comment? All in favor? Pass. New business, under new business, consideration of draft consent agreement is presented by Mike Manning on behalf of Hurloth Mattson, Chris Hansen, the code officer will speak on that.
Good evening, Chris Hansen, code officer. Before Mike speaks, I'd just like to bring the board up to speed on this issue. Issue before the board tonight concerns an alleged violation involving the division of the property formerly owned by Elwin Plummer located off Gore Road. The lot was divided into four lots in December of two thousand and three. In late two thousand and nine, MGM Builders proposed extending Autumn Way in an effort to further subdivide the Mattson property into two lots. At that time, at staff's request, the town's attorney reviewed the two thousand and three divisions of the Plummer property and concluded that an illegal subdivision had been created. In two thousand and ten, the town proposed to settle with Mr. Plummer by having Mr. Plummer either go to the planning board with a subdivision application or a consent agreement. The details of a consent agreement were discussed in an executive session in January of two thousand and ten. After Mr. Manning's presentation tonight, I would recommend meeting in executive session to discuss with the board and legal counsel.
Thank you. Any discussion? And I think Mike wanted to address the board.
Hi, I'm Mike Manning, representing my father-in-law, Hurloth Mattson. Hurloth Mattson is Elwin Plummer's brother-in-law, so I kind of wanted to present it where if you guys had any questions to ask about the history and how we got to this place, I could kind of explain that to you. But anyways, I'm up here for any questions you could have.
Mike?
Mike, you have a standing consent agreement from this body. What's changed?
Well, the, I mean, the original consent agreement you guys sent over, they're asking for a fifty thousand dollar fine, which is, we were trying to come to an agreement that seemed like we could both work with and that was pretty, I thought it was pretty excessive. Originally in two thousand and three, when Elwin divided the land, it was, it could have been done correctly except for the lawyer recorded it in the wrong order. He ended up selling the homestead before he gifted a lot to his brother-in-law. So corrective deeds were filed and it was done in the correct intended order. So on Elwin's and Hurloth's part and my part, we don't see that there was a violation, so that's why we were asking for a lesser amount than what you guys originally proposed, but something also to, you know, to at least give the town some reimbursement for expenses and stuff like that and also that, you know, as in the proposed, what I had proposed for, I thought that was a reasonable amount.
Charles?
Good evening, Charles, eleven fourteen Levitt Road, East Row. The one question I had after, and I was involved in some of these negotiations prior to and obviously some of the documents that were online regarding the consent agreement, and this is a question I guess I have for Chris, is it seems as though there were two violations, we were talking, one about the road and one about the subdivision. Is that correct, my understanding?
I believe in two thousand...
Charlie, excuse me, you're supposed to address the slide board.
Okay, so before Chris answers that, then I guess, not asking him, I actually, I addressed the chair. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for reminding me of that. I guess my question is, at one time, a document was sent by the town planner, I would think it was Bob Thon's, that indicated that after his review, he had determined that there was no violation in subdivision, I think, possibly because of some of the confusion in the recording of the deeds and then the corrective deeds. So that's what my question is, if our contracted town planner, which sometimes, and I think we've seen this in the past, airs in their decision and gives a citizen a decision in writing that says they believe that there's no violation, where is our responsibility to either accept that or fall back on our sword and still go forward with a, with violations? That's my question.
Thank you.
I'd like to address this question about prior violations. There's been two notices of violation. One was in two thousand and three that notified Mr. Manning that the lots and the road that were created violated our land use ordinance pertaining to the creation of lots. Those were to be resolved by Mr. Manning coming to do a subdivision, which what he, what he actually did was come in to do a road application for a private way and he configured the lots so they did meet our lot standards. I don't think at this time we should discuss without the, in public, I think we should discuss these matters in executive session. This may end up in court and I wouldn't want to discuss the details of this case, it may jeopardize our court case if we have one.
Good point. Mr. Chair? I'm in agreement with Mr. Hanson in that we're going down the road here discussing a consent agreement that hasn't been signed and that should be in executive session, not in a public session.
I agree.
And if we go into executive session, Mr. Manning's invited into the executive session so that we can have that discussion openly with Mr. Manning at that time, but we shouldn't be discussing a consent agreement in public, especially one that hasn't been signed.
Okay. When are you suggesting it in executive session? Right now?
Well, I mean, if there's any other public comment, then take it now and then we'll go into executive session.
Any other comment on public?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session under Title I, four oh five, six...
E.
E, to discuss a legal matter.
Second. All in favor? We're in on executive session. All right, under new business, B.
Well, can we resolve the issue with Mr. Manning? I would suggest to Mr. Manning that he negotiate with Chris Hansen on the consent agreement or go to the planning board and get subdivision approval, one or the other. I don't think you need a motion?
You don't.
I just think that where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Manning.
Thank you.
Okay, and B. Setting of fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, fifteen budget goals.
We have put together some draft goals for your consideration and so I think tonight's exercise is to see if we can finalize those and get them distributed out to the department heads and agencies. We're a little bit behind our usual schedule at this point, so I think tonight's the night to set them.
I'm okay with that.
I just want, I want to emphasize that I think that the department heads need to come forward with any expansion of their department, now is the time to do it. I mean, if there's things that they need to expand beyond what has been in place for the last six or seven years...
Be as creative as possible.
Right, now is the time to do it. And then have us decide and have the budget finance committee decide whether they make sense or not.
I agree. I just know with the trucks breaking, we need some trucks.
This is not a public hearing. I'll give it to you.
Charlie?
If Charles, eleven fourteen Levitt Road, East Raymond, if the board has more of the further questions, I had a couple, I don't know if we could answer them or not right now regarding the goals. The first one was, which I think is very important, to wrap our heads around the larger issues going forward for the budget is, where do we stand on the two million dollar bond as far as did we do the twenty thousand in two thousand and fourteen and then all of the principal debt will come in to play, not the fourteen, fifteen fiscal year, but the fifteen, sixteen fiscal year, or is there going to be a cost associated with the two million dollar bond in this coming fiscal year, two thousand and fourteen, fifteen? That was my first question.
I didn't come prepared to answer questions about the bond tonight. Perhaps we can get the questions on the record and we'll issue answers.
We'll get to it.
I didn't know this was a question and answer.
I just want, just a comment to that, it's pretty hard to set goals when you don't know what your debt going forward is going to be, but leave that as it may, that's just a comment, financial management comment. The other one I have is I noticed the goals have not included our, trying to at least comply with L D one and rather than this being in the form of a question as to why not, since I would like to be able to maybe add some information to that so that when we do answer the question under your considerations, if you consider these goals tonight, it's kind of tough to ask a question and then you're going to vote on the goals without the information, so I'll make my comment about L D one. L D one has been extremely helpful to the town of Raymond. Over the past five years, I did a poll of the numbers for the town of Raymond in the fiscal year two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, which is a five-year poll to two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, and in that period of time, the municipal side of the budget, which is the gross budget plus the TIF, has increased six hundred and thirty-eight thousand and eighty-one dollars, which is, this is the spending side of the budget, not the county, which doesn't include L D one, or the TIF would be included, but, oh no, the TIF is out of it also. So what we've experienced in the town of Raymond, true increase in spending over the past five fiscal years is well over a half a million dollar increase, and it's a sixteen point four percent increase. During that period of time, we received and congratulations to all the, I believe it was a triple A bond rating or an A A plus bond rating. Salaries have gone up every year over that five-year period, two percent, in some individual cases even more. Fire N E M S has gone up forty-two thousand dollars over that, that period of time and was able to roll over an additional approximately twenty to thirty thousand dollar savings from the elimination of local dispatch. Public Works went up fifty-six thousand, again, this is including the cost of living raises for employees within those departments, but its real budget has gone up fifty-six thousand dollars over that period of time. The library is receiving sixty-five hundred dollars more than it did before from the thirty-one nine to the thirty-seven five. Economic Development, which wasn't even on our radar back five years ago, receives seven thousand dollars. General Assistance is up four thousand dollars. Next year, not this fiscal year coming up, but the following fiscal year, will be retiring three hundred and eight thousand dollars in debt. Hundred ninety-five thousand dollars from the Tower of Eastman has gone into the U F B as a cushion for this coming fiscal year, two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. We front-loaded the Fire N E M S and Public Works C I P in paving by over a half a million dollars. So, and finally, we established a new budget baseline. By increasing our budget, we've established a new baseline going into two thousand and fourteen, fifteen under L D one, which means pretty much once we deal with revenue sharing, the increase in property valuation, homestead, I don't know how homestead's going to play into that, but the assessor, the contract assessor will do all those numbers, but pretty much we'll see an increase probably under L D one. Realistically, last year it was a sixty thousand dollar increase under our previous budget. So with all that going forward, I guess I'm disappointed that this board has not acknowledged how good L D one has been for the town of Raymond by not including its goals going forward. And if you were to vote on it tonight, I would strongly recommend you put back into place our L D one, at least the goal to comply with L D one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments from the board? I'm okay with the goals as they are. I mean, I think this board has proven itself to be quite fiscally conservative and done a pretty good job with the tax rate compared to what's going on, so I don't need to have L D one staring me in the face as a goal, I pretty much am shooting for that number anyway.
I think the department heads are the same way though, too. They realize that, I think they're very good at conserving and budget conscious.
You know, Mr. Chair, can the audience members keep the comments to themselves? It's not like I'm deaf.
If they intend to continue comment, they will do it outside this room. Period.
So do we need a, you want to do a motion to accept these or is that what we need?
Yeah. Do we run a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to accept our budget goals.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor? All right. All right, moving on to item C, new business, consideration of warrant article for Tenney River Project. Okay, at the December two thousand and thirteen meeting, the board voted favorably to provide fifteen thousand dollars from open space fund to purchase land as proposed in the Tenney River Corridor Protection Project Phase One. Attached to the E packet is proposed warrant language for consideration as well as other documents concerning the project's scope. There is a public hearing scheduled for the February meeting to allow for comment on this topic before considering its inclusion in the two thousand and fourteen town meeting warrant ballot. I think we've already discussed this here.
So, so let me understand this correctly, we're going to vote on, this is the warrant that we're going to put out in front of the public hearing next month?
Yes.
Is that...
Yes.
Okay.
But we would not vote to recommend, not recommend or be neutral until after the public hearing.
That's correct.
Excuse me.
I'll make a motion to send out this warrant for a public hearing next month.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Any public comment?
It's too late now.
I had my hand up, but you guys are looking down, so I'm one of the butters and nothing has been told to any of the butters about this project, so nothing.
You'll have a chance at public hearing next month.
Well, you know, can I talk now?
Up to the chair.
Go ahead. We'll do a public, this next thing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to talk. Dana, this is John, six four River Road. The public hearing is nice news to hear, but you, you know, we have to realize that we're, we're going to be giving, using public funds on a private road that most of the people that live on that road, except two families, don't want it's more traffic. We, there's no correspondence with the residents on that road with this project. I have deeded access to the property that's, that's in question here. What's going to happen with that? Nobody knows. I'm not the only one that has deeded access and most of the people that live on that road live outstate, so they can't vote in this town, which kind of, you know, puts them in a bind, but nobody wants more traffic on the river road. I mean, you go down there right now and it's like, it's a luge run, man. We could, we could use it for the Olympics. It's ice, it's a one-lane road and we have no guarantees what's going on with this road, with this new plan, what's going to happen, we have no plans. Nothing's been said to us, nothing. There's two families, the Gasses and Palmers, that are involved in this, all right? And you know that, Sam, all right? Now, nobody else on that road is, is in favor of this project to go through without a huge, you know, and these guys can't come up, you know, from outstate to go to a public hearing. You know that, Joe. They live in South Carolina or, you know, Florida or whatever, they can't come up here in this winter to go to a public hearing and it's crazy. So what I'm asking is this be put off for a while until the butters, especially me, know more about it and if not, well, I'll take whatever course I have to. I've done that before and I'll do it again, but, you know, it's just one of those things that people are putting stuff down our throats, we live on a private road and we want to stay private. The more traffic on that road, it's a one, it's a one-lane road, man, and that's all I can say. It's, I'm safe, Bruce, you know, you've been down there with your ladder truck. How hard was it to come out of that road, Bruce? Very hard, right? Very hard. Yeah, so this is what we're up against and you guys want to give the Boy Scouts fifteen thousand dollars or Lune Echo or whatever, I don't have a problem with that. I don't, I don't have a problem with, you know, preserving land, but let's talk to the people that live on that road and, and come up with a plan. Right now, we don't have a plan and I stay in that road, I plow that road up to my house and everybody else beyond that's on their own and, you know, they take care of it, but there's no plan right now from the town and if the town is going to put money on that road, let's, you know, I want to see some results and, you know, I'd like to see a safety inspection, Bruce? You know, is this, is this the right place to spend money on a road like this where you can't even go get trash and you want to put more traffic on it? I'm all in favor for conserve, you know, conservative lands, but when it comes time to infringing on property rights, I have a problem with that, Sam. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask the town manager a question?
Of course.
Do, do we have an obligation to notify the butters on this? Like if there's a subdivision in front of the planning board, you have to notify the butters? Is there any obligation on the town's part?
I can certainly research that, but my off-the-cuff answer would be no.
Yes.
But, but I...
I don't, I don't think you have to, I don't think that you, are you asking, in order for the town to contribute an amount of money toward a proposed open space conservation easement purchase, we have to notify and get the consent of all the butters? I don't think so.
We asked that question.
I don't think so.
That was part of the question, why we, we asked if there was any issues with the town...
No.
To contribute the money.
Yeah, that answer, that question was answered as far as, you know, whether there's a contribution on the part of the town. My question is, is there an obligation of the town to notify the butters?
Before we go any further, this is public discussion now, we're going to keep this to three minutes per person and you make your point and that's it. Don't make it over and over again, we appreciate that.
But I mean, I know what, if you have a subdivision or, you know, some type of building project, you have to notify the butters.
But you're asking me, in my experience, a land acquisition project, I'm saying no, I mean, you certainly could, you're having a public hearing, that's the opportunity for butters to speak their mind. It's a legal question, we certainly could ask it.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's an obligation on the town's part, but I just want to make sure.
Yeah, it's not a change of use, it's just a change of ownership.
Right.
We're not proposing any usages.
Yeah, well, can I speak again?
Yes.
Well, you know, don't be so sad, Sam, but, you know, it's just one of those things. I live on that road, all right? If that would be going on on your road, you'd be putting up the same fight that I am and Mr. Bruno would be doing the same thing, so please hear me out.
Well, I mean, it may be happening on my road, too.
Well, I know that, Mr. Bruno, but you're also in favor of that project, so I'm not in favor of this project.
How you know my position?
Well, you all are, all be voting for it, so it's just, you know, it's history and, you know, being the progressive that you are, that's, that's fine, but, you know, it's just one of these things that the people on my road haven't been notified by anybody, nobody, nobody. That Lune Echo, whoever's, you know, running this thing, nobody has written us a letter, nothing.
You made your point.
Well, I made my point, but you're, you're, you're also, you know, you want to vote for fifteen thousand dollars on a private road. I plow that road, I sand that road, I grade that road, nobody else helps me grade that road except my neighbors and there's two people on that, live on that road that want this project... live on that road, that want this project, and the others could care less? And they live out of state. So, what, you know, what do you do? They're not gonna come up here for a, a special meeting. It's, it's unfair for these people.
If it's a private road, how can anyone-
It's a private road.
...go on it to begin with, other than the people that own it?
No, you, you still have access.
No.
You can't block people from going on.
But, Mr. Bruno, you, you, you yourself voted against the project on Raymond Pond because it was a private road. I'm, I'm putting that back on you because there was a private road that wanted public access to it, and we're gonna have public access on River Road, whether I like it or not. We're gonna get it, all right? Now, you voted against that, and you-
I didn't vote for anything.
Well, you know, but you stood up at the meeting and said, you know, we can't do that because it's a private road. So, are you changing your mind now?
No, I'm-
Yeah, you are.
Well, if you let me answer-
Please.
-but I'm not gonna get into this discussion with you here, because you're just throwing stuff out that's not true. Once again, you go off on a tangent, you accuse me of being a progressive and all this other stuff, without even knowing my position on anything. So, I'm not gonna respond to you.
That's fine.
Dana, I, I think you have made your point several times over-
I made my point, it's a private road, and we want our private privileges.
It's understood.
You know? Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie? And I admonish you, please, to keep it down.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, quickly, it's, uh, discussion from the public happens before the motion is made. Sponsor, questions from the board, questions from the public, motions made, public doesn't speak. So, I appreciate this opportunity to speak now. I think the two distinctions I just heard that I would just like to clarify, is there is a distinction between a legal obligation and a moral obligation. So, when you're discussing, is it legally? I don't, I believe the town manager is correct, it's interpretation, this is a transfer of ownership, there's no obligation. It's not like the cell phone tower on Raymond Hill Road, where we're going for a change of use. That's my first distinction, legal versus moral. Is it morally, should we be obligated as a people in a community to notify, uh, folks that something like this is gonna happen in the public hearings coming up, whether they're residents on their own choosing, or resident, or non-residents on their own choosing? I think there may be a moral obligation. The second point I'd like to make is that distinction between change of use. Technically, is it a change of use? Code enforcement officer is in hand, but probably not. Is it gonna be a change of use? Absolutely. That's rural residential shortland property, for the most part, that would've had five or six or seven houses on it, and now it's gonna be part of the Boy Scout camp in America, which is going to have rallies and jamborees and usage of that property, which is different than what was probably what we know to be rural residential five or six house sites. So, again, just to make those distinctions, I won't go over them, but that should be considered, as what do we as a community do when we're faced with these? Is it send out a mailing to let folks know, okay, you know, a little more administrative time, that there's gonna be a public hearing? I, I don't think that's out of the question, but that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say that that was not planned to do this, gonna run on the butters' list down a whole length of River Road and the surrounding area, and just like it would do for a planning board meeting.
It'd also be advertised as well.
I can't talk on this subject for reasons.
But that's, uh, that's something we're doing as a courtesy. The question, you know, was whether we were legally obligated, and, I mean, I don't know if I'd go so far as to say moral obligation, but we do do the best we can to try to notify people of what's occurring. My, my guess would be there's probably very few, if any, people on that road who don't know what's occurring, so, and if they're not paying attention, then, well, if they're not paying attention, it's posted on the web, it's available.
They're out of state, Don.
The web goes out of state. Did you know that?
I, I think we've had enough on this.
Yes.
So, um, we've already taken the vote. We'll have a public hearing next month, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Town manager report? Oh, wait a minute. Public comment, don't we?
Right.
Yeah, public comment.
Uh, community development block grant.
Where's that?
And the forestry bid update.
Yeah, the, the public-
Oh, that's a, oh, town manager.
Yeah, 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 town manager reports.
Okay, yeah.
You wanna do town manager report before public com- comment?
Well, let's do public comment now.
Okay.
We'll keep it to three minutes and-
I'll try, I'll go, I'll talk fast, Mr. Chairman. Charles, eleven fourteen, Levitt Road, East Raymond, just a few issues and concerns for future agenda items to share with the board and the community. Uh, number one, I'm concerned that Selectmen Communication seems, again, to have disappeared from the agenda. Uh, I'm not sure if, uh, what the explanation is for this. I can only assume either one, the Selectmen, have no individual comments, issues, public notices, or concerns they would like to share freely with the community and their colleagues, or, uh, the chair does not want individual Selectmen to freely share issues, public notices, comments, and concerns with the public. So, hopefully, at some point, you would reconsider putting the Selectmen's, uh, communications back on the agenda. Number two-
Just another dictator here.
Raymond TV. Uh, we spent nearly thirty thousand dollars to record and broadcast meetings of the town of Raymond. The recordings are the official record for the town. The mission statement, which is the technology committee which Raymond TV falls under, is to promote democracy and community through understanding, knowledge, and equity based on a complete, accurate, accessible, and timely information delivered by a variety of well-managed and cost-effective technology solutions. Lately, this seems to be more like mission impossible. Black screens nightly, dropped audio, out-of-date, uh, rebroadcasts in place of current meetings, no backup system. And I brought this when I was on the Select Board many times, and I was assured there'd always be a backup session, uh, uh, a backup system if we had a failure of Raymond TV when we were having meetings, whether it was tape recordings or otherwise, so, uh, and the list goes on. And just, uh, I do have, and I don't have time to just tell you, the most current Select Board meeting that's up there is, uh, the oldest one is August, uh, August of, uh, twenty first. Uh, the newest is the, uh, that we have on there is a Budget Finance Committee of, uh, November fourth. So, there's been, uh, a regular meeting of the Select Board on eleven twelve, the retreat on eleven eighteen, which there is absolutely no record of the retreat, which was a public meeting, not even written minutes, that you've never even approved as a board. Uh, the regular meeting of December tenth, and the workshop of twelve seventeen. So, we're here discussing on Ju-, uh, January the fourteenth, and the most current Select Board meeting we have is back in November, in Budget Finance Committee. So, I, I think it's an issue you ought to look at, uh, going forward. And, uh, my third and last comment is, uh, I was visiting with my brother Peter the other night to watch one of the playoff football games, and I noticed a beautiful wood-mounted clock and testimonial, uh, on his desk, uh, from the town of Raymond. This was in recognition of his twenty-five-plus years of service on the appeals board, and I would like to congratulate this board for, the most part, not allowing personal animus, as I think it's been described in the past, uh, to dictate the civil duties and responsibilities of the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Thank you. There was no personal animus with your brother.
No, it's, it's been referred to relationships in town, Mr. Chairman, as I think it was Mr. Wilson, one time, contentiousness.
Any other public comment?
Any other public comment?
Thank you, Bruce Tupper, Fire Chief, resident of, uh, one eighteen Valley Road, Tonerayman. Um, I would like to take a minute, if I can, and on a positive note, uh, make recognition of some efforts that have been going on in town. Um, of late, uh, as you know, this winter has been an extreme challenge, and as Mr. Deschardens referred to his road as a luge, most of our roads on the private side and driveways have been, creating some various challenges for the Fire and Rescue Department to access these places. Uh, we have had some people get hurt in the line of duty, falls, et cetera, and we've had some people get stuck, me being one of them. Um, I would like to take the opportunity at this point to thank our Public Works Department for their excellent work, for being right there for us, calling us on the radio and, and being preactive rather than reactive, in most cases, to come out and get us sand and get us into the places that we need to safely. So, I've written a nice letter for Public Works Director Nathan White in recognition of this, and for his crew. And we do thank you greatly, and this comes from the Fire and Rescue Department and me just being their representative, so thank you very much.
Mother nature has not been nice at all, and you guys have been out there.
Okay, any further public comment?
No, I slipped through the stop sign, four times.
Any further public comment? Okay, public comment is closed. Next issue, or the next item, is town manager reporting communications.
Okay, we have a few things tonight. First thing, of course, as always, is to confirm the date of the next regular meeting proposed, uh, February eleventh, two thousand fourteen.
Yep.
I'll set with that, folks?
Yes.
All right, moving right along. I was gonna do a little update on the forestry bid, but I see we have Greg Foster here, and so he, more than anyone else, has been involved in that, along with, uh, with Danielle, so maybe Greg would give us a brief overview of that, and, uh, what we're seeking, I guess, at this point, is just a confirmation, because you have tentatively awarded it to the apparent high bidder, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
I don't know how much you want me to say.
I just want you to give the thirty-second tour.
Let's start. One second.
Or-
One minute, if you want.
I was gonna tell Nathan, if you need to turn the sand truck around, it's my driveway. He's welcome to. Anyway, uh, uh, Greg Foster, twenty-nine, Lech Hill Road, and also contracted to do the, administer the timber sale on the forest property owned by the town on Patricia Avenue. I've marked the lot to be cut, I provided an estimate to you, and I think I've given all that stuff to you. Uh, we invited people to look at the property, uh, we did a bid showing, uh, three people showed up. In the end, we got five legitimate bids. Uh, the sixth bid was bid sent in after four P.M., uh, for a number of reasons, but anyway, that, that sixth bid was, would've been fourth, anyway. I, in the end, uh, after reviewing all the bids, I've concluded that Brown and Brown Trucking of Norway is the high bidder, and according to, you know, my volume estimates and his bids, uh, the gross amount of income expected from the timber sale is gonna be around fifty-five thousand dollars, and I would recommend that we accept, uh, Brown and Brown as the contractor, and we move, uh, move forward with, uh, requesting a down payment from him in the amount of eleven thousand dollars, in addition to a deposit of five thousand, uh, along with a certificate of insurance, and that, once he does all that, then I recommend we, uh, prepare a contract that represents the, the timber sale amount that they bid and, and move forward.
I have a question. Greg, when do you expect them to start after the award?
They're, they have, uh, twelve months to do the timber sale.
Okay.
But once they put eleven thousand dollars down, plus five thousand, I'm sure they'll move rather quickly to, to do the timber sale. They, they move, this crew moves wood in a hurry. It, it won't take them long, once they're there.
So, that, that eleven thousand dollars becomes part of Raymond's revenue at that point, or is it held in escrow, or how does that work?
That, that's actually a stumpage payment.
Okay.
And the way it works is, when, when he starts harvesting timber, uh, I will take mon-, uh, weekly stumpage payments from him, uh, until he gets to the point where I think he's, uh, a little more than eleven thousand dollars from completing the sale, and then I'll, I'll keep track of the, uh, stumpage payments from there forward. I don't know, I'm, I'm probably confusing this, but-
So-
The eleven thousand is part of the total fifty-five thousand dollars.
I assume that money goes into a separate account, Nancy, and is held there?
Well, some of it has, uh, already been spent and paying Greg and paying for advertising and stuff, so those will be paid off first.
That was the grant money, though, right? Then we get a grant, right?
Some of it was, yes, but there've been other expenses beyond that.
No, I, my payment is, is as the timber is sold. I take a commission as it's sold. So, there's been no payment to me, other than, as you said, the, the grant, which paid for the-
Right.
...management plan, which has nothing really to do with the timber sale.
Okay.
And the balance is paid when the project is completed? Or what is the balance?
Well, I, I, I'm not explaining this well, but in a typical timber sale, as you proceed forward, as the timber is sold, the, the landowner has paid the stumpage value. Uh, in this case, we're gonna get eleven thousand dollars. The logger's gonna start paying as he, uh, sells the timber to the mills, but before he, uh, reaches the eleven thousand dollar mark, in terms of what's left to pay, I'll, I'll follow that and make sure that, oh, I'm still making this confusing, I'm sorry.
We're just trying to figure out how we're getting our, how we're getting our fifty-five thousand dollars.
Yes.
And then he drives down on the eleven, that's pretty much what happens?
And then you go.
And then you go.
With that.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept Greg Foster's recommendation on Brown and Brown Trucking.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
I only have one more comment. A- after I marked some of the timber, I noticed that somebody came and put no trespassing signs on the Raymond side of the boundary line, and probably we should follow through and ask why. I believe that it's property that's in Wyndham, that it butts it, and I'm not sure if they're concerned about the fact that I marked it, and they have a different idea where the line is or what, but I will follow through and find out what it is.
But we're, we're positive on the survey line.
The, the line has been blazed and painted, uh, it's, I think it's been maintained, 'cause, 'cause state losses, the towns have to maintain their, their lines, and it looks to me as it, that that one has. There are places I haven't found it, but not where they put the sign up.
Okay.
Thanks, Greg.
We should have no trespassing from Wyndham, but they have forestry practices, they have town forest practices.
Okay, item E, community development block grant, the application, uh, do you want to explain?
Okay, I'll give a very brief on this, and I know Danielle wants to say a few words. She's been very, uh, involved in the development of the grant application, along with Caroline Paris from, uh, GP Cog. But this, uh, all came about through the Raymond Revitalization Committee, and we've had a, a number of meetings, an onsite, uh, visit, but, uh, the, the very short version, and I'll let her fill in some of the more detailed information, is that we're seeking a letter of support from the Board of Selectmen to apply for a community development block grant, a study grant, to see about the feasibility of possibly converting the former Inbed Tech Chipco building into a, uh, business incubator site, uh, for high technology. This was originally, as you know, Sam, brought up, uh, as a possibility, uh, by Wayne Holmquist. He was, uh, interested in, uh, you know, three D printing and other advanced CNC machining, other advanced technologies. So, we, we began to research that, we began to research the notion of, uh, you know, what's Raymond about, the idea of, uh, quality of life, and also manufacturing is the history, you know, high technology manufacturing. So, um, we got excited and interested in this idea, and I have a, a letter here that I would like you to sign, and basically, uh, it's Sioux-Cumbly County that administers the, uh, Community Development Block Grant Program, and, uh, of which we're a part, and it says, uh, Planning Grant Letter of Support. We are writing in enthusiastic support of the planning grant application that's being submitted to develop a business plan for a possible manufacturing incubator to be located in Raymond. A manufacturing incubator has the potential to have a significant positive economic impact on the Lakes region, and will add to the ongoing business development efforts of the town of Raymond. We are hopeful that initiatives like this will lead to restoring local manufacturing jobs lost over the past decade. Thank you for your consideration of the town of Raymond application, when awarding CDBG planning grant funding this year. It'll be signed, if you agree to this, by the Board of Selectmen. I should a- add, importantly, there is no local match, uh, so this is, uh, money that would, you know, come through the county, uh, from the federal government, that would be used to study this business development, or possible business development use.
Anything, anything left for you?
And with that, no, 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 no. Well, I, I don't wanna, go ahead, Danielle.
Okay, uh, thank you. So, uh, as he said, back in October, we were approached by Wayne Holmquist during our Rottweiler League meeting, he said he was excited about three D printing, um, and asked us to look into it, because there's a Digifab conference, wanted tickets to it, it was like two hundred dollars a piece, and I was like, wow, I was a student there, I'll see if I can get us in, you know, 'cause we're nonprofits. So, I called and I spoke to Greg Kavanaugh, he's the Assistant Director of the SI, uh, Flying Sciences Program at USM. So, I called and I spoke to Greg, uh, Kavanaugh, he's the assistant director of the Asoci- uh, five sciences program at USM. He says, I'll do you one better, come down and check out our facilities and see what we're all about, like, um, so I went down with Don and Dominic and we kind of cruised through their, um, facilities, kind of saw the different things that their programs had to offer. And then he started describing this building that they'd been working on with AbCog, which is to build this, uh, to utilize this building where there was two sides of it. One side was for research and development and the other side was for manufacturing. And the research and development side would make, um, low-cost resources available, available to the average innovator. So, there, so instead of paying two hundred dollars an hour, they were paying students twenty dollars an hour to take their product and to actually develop it and make it so it was ready for production. Then the other side was gonna be all this machinery and equipment, not necessarily three D printing, but CNC machining, lathes, whatever they needed to make this product work. And then they would get them up and running as a business, and once they outgrew it, they would then help to find them a home where they could continue to, the manufacturing process, pro- um, you know, in a very good feasible sense. So, immediately when we heard this, we thought of one building, which is the Chipco in old Embedtech, because you have your office spaces on one side and then the, um, manufacturing on the other, that's already been partially segmented. So, we did end up going to the Digifab conference but didn't get tickets, so we were kind of like just hanging around with all the, uh, demonstrators outside taking their pamphlets, hoping to run into people. And we ran into, uh, Greg and Caroline Paris from GP Cog at the same time and said, look, how can we make this work? Because AbCog, the, uh, investor pulled out and, you know, what is it that we can do? We had a, um, site meeting with Caroline Paris, members of revitalization committee, um, Sam was there, we had, um, Aaron Chacaro and Emily Friedman from the block grant program. And they said, this is an awesome opportunity for Raymond, we can, um, work to help you get a planning grant. Right now, we're going for a thirty thousand dollars, zero percent match planning grant to look at not only the feasibility of the building and this project going into Raymond itself, but to, um, look at the cost estimates for getting this up and running, what sort of machinery would be utilized there. And, um, so that way we can move on to the next phase of development, which is getting it up off the ground. I just wanted you to know that this, this project also has three phases to it. Um, the first one is like the research and development for entrepreneurs, so anyone who has that funky business idea can now go to these people and get, like, students through the ventures program at USM and get them to work it out and actually get it into a prototype and a plan. The second is the manufacturing potential for startup businesses, and then as they grow and become more prosperous, hopefully that we will be set up for them to move to another location in Raymond and keep all that money here. Um, and then the third part is community education, because if we do this, USM will move a portion, well, if it all works out, we'll move a portion of their campus here to Raymond. So, not only will they be able to offer course trainings and educational classes, but they'll also be able to, um, you know, just even offer some level of, um, training for the businesses as well as if someone just wants to learn how to do AutoPad. So, I think that this is an excellent opportunity for Raymond to help put itself on the map and revitalize itself in terms of, you know, bringing back some of those manufacturing positions that is lost over the years, as well as an educational opportunity for people my age to, you know, because technology is the wave of the future. And it fits into the rural character of Raymond, because we're not talking about manufacturing like that has all of these byproducts and pollutions. We're talking about, you know, three D cartridges and things like that that, or CNC machining that are relatively, you know, low impact to the environment and therefore, you know, we're not, we're not talking about these giant mills and such, so...
Of course, the, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I'm, no, that's, I, I'm about done. So, I just, I hope that you'll be in support of this project so that we can, like, see if it's at least feasible for the town of Raymond.
Let's just like to emphasize one thing, and that is that it's already been mentioned, but the presence of humane here will draw other businesses.
So, you have a thing or two to say in addition?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Charles eleven fourteen Levitt Road, uh, East Raymond. Just a, uh, just a quick couple of questions, I'm not gonna get answered now, but, uh, number one, days have rolled all over again. That letter you have before you recommending this is pretty much verbatim the same letter we put out for Chipco many years ago. Uh, and if you, uh, look at the, uh, annual report for the town of Raymond, Chipco still owes us eighteen thousand dollars in back taxes. So, just a, just to be careful when you, when you go forward and, uh, wanna, wanna put, uh, the power and leverage of the people in the community of the town of Raymond behind research and development, uh, venture capital, so to speak. And it's venture capital, it's federal government money, so it's our venture capital, us citizens and taxpayers. Uh, the other thing is, is who owns the building?
Yeah, you, do you want me to answer those questions?
Wait, don't, yeah.
You might as well.
Okay, um, first, it's, it's a completely different situation. Uh, the letter is, uh, completely different as far as I, as far as I know, that was many, many years ago. But it is a private sector, um, owned business, um, and building. And, uh, that, that does not preclude it from being redeveloped into this business incubator, this business use. Uh, in fact, the building they were looking at in Lewis and Auburn, I believe, is also privately owned, and so, um, so that's not a prohibitive issue. And, um, it may not work for Mr. Mishu, it may not end up being anything that he's interested in. But I don't understand the line of thinking that would say to not explore and to not try to find a way to move the town forward with respect to business development, uh, you know, that, that would somehow be a bad idea. But, so that's what we're trying to do, Mr. Levitt, we're trying, we're trying to move the town forward.
And, and...
I think, I think that's all understood, yes.
Yeah, that was the same premise behind Chipco, which we all, with all good intentions, we did that and they owe us eighteen thousand dollars and we spent a lot of taxpayers' money, uh, doing a high-end technology, radio frequencies for the deer and the, uh, beef cattle and everything else. And, uh, we're still owed eighteen thousand dollars and we have an empty shell of a building down there. The third point I want to make is about technology. Um, at the, uh, Las Vegas Technology Show this week, they've unveiled, uh, five hundred dollar three D printers that are gonna, uh, print things out in sugar and in metal. And so, to me, uh, you have to be very careful with technology, would be similar to, uh, being careful not to invest too much money into Betamax, for those of us old people who understand that. Is that by the time we get this incubator going and we actually using public funds to fund a private, privately-owned building, whether it's USM moving in or us buying them or their equipment, have to be very careful with technology, because this is gonna take two or three years before this is hitting the bricks. And probably some kid over at the, I would hope, in the Raymond Elementary School will probably be using a three D printer to, uh, uh, create probably a go-bot for Lonnie's business to take packages off of the warehouse shelves. So, just, just, uh, just a few things to consider.
If, if we can make a quick...
Just one real positive comment, but thank you, thank...
Those are positive, by the way.
Yeah, thank you for your, thank you for your...
I, I hate to be negative, so I'll say I'll preclude this as a positive.
I, I just wanna say that, uh, Embedtech Chipco enabled the town to extend the water line from Wyndham and the receipt of a four hundred thousand dollar community development block grant. So, um, so it's not all negative, it's a, it was a, although the business didn't survive, there were some very positive things that happened. And, uh, and, and as I said, they're totally dissimilar issues, but thanks for the comments. Uh, next issue, ready for the next one? The next issue on the town manager report?
Yes.
Okay, I was trying to get through that one. Okay, the next one is the Sevago Lake, uh, fishing derby, which will be held on the fifteenth and sixteenth. Uh, Chief Tupper had a very good, uh, planning meeting that occurred after work this, well, late this afternoon, this evening. And so, thank you, Chief Tupper, for that. You do a great job in putting those together and getting all the involved parties, interested parties together and coming up with a comprehensive public safety plan. So, so that, that occurred, and I think the final thing, I'd like to, this is not in the area of, of not the greatest news, but something we've got to deal with. I'd like to have, uh, Nathan stand up and tell us about, uh, an issue that occurred this weekend and then our proposed solution.
Our F five fifty, uh, dump truck, plow truck, uh, we lost the transmission in a sad D afternoon out sanding. That truck was marked to be replaced in the spring, that's why we're, we're here. Uh, we've got a couple estimates on the repair, which was around about six thousand to sixty-five hundred dollars to repair the truck. I don't feel the truck's worth putting that kind of money into where we're gonna replace it in the spring anyway. It's been here for twelve years, it's been a good truck, I think it's time to cut our losses and move on. Um, we found a, uh, two thousand fourteen F five fifty, which is exactly the same truck that we've got, the equipment's the same. Uh, we negotiated with the help of Don and Nancy down to seventy-nine thousand for the truck. We got, uh, financing for three years at two point one percent, I believe it was. And here we are.
Yeah, so seventy-nine nine is where we're at on it. Unfortunately, when they came to evaluate our trade, they didn't think much of our trade. We ended up with seven thousand dollars as a, a value on that. And so, uh, you, so anyway, what I, what I'd like to do is, is to go ahead and replace the truck utilizing public works, you know, reserve monies. And on a three-year lease purchase, and...
On the three...
Go ahead, Nathan.
On the three-year lease purchase, it won't expend any more money than we are currently budgeting in the CIP equipment account. So, there'll be no change in my budget to replace this truck, and it'll still leave us some money left over in that reserve account. I think the payments, I have, I guess we haven't ironed out the final payment, it's like twenty-two thousand a year for three years with a forty thousand dollar down payment.
Good, thanks.
Yeah, I, I think we're in a situation where we don't have a choice, we need the truck to...
Yeah.
To maintain the roads as they are, and so I'll make a motion to, uh, allow Nathan and Don and Nancy to move forward on purchasing this truck.
Second. A favor?
The, the second thing, I, and I don't know if I need you, you know, to make a motion on this, but, uh, but maybe it's the best thing to do, and that is the disposal of the old truck, we're gonna have to get creative. You know, I, my proposal, uh, is to not accept the seven thousand dollar trade-in. Um, the truck would be worth approximately fifteen to twenty thousand dollars if it were running, uh, if it was able to move. And so, my, the latest thing that we have explored is the idea of trading it with a truck broker, uh, S E McLean out of Limerick...
Limerick.
For ten thousand cash and five thousand in kind, and, uh, I think if we can get that deal, we better take it. They offered us seven thousand as a trade.
It certainly beats...
God, you're the best used car salesman I know, so, yeah.
Sam?
Yes?
Um, I think that, uh, you know, we're sitting here talking about a truck that's, uh, eleven years old. And if we were in other towns and, and functioned the way, you know, we know other towns do, you know, we'd be replacing trucks every five, six years. Um, and I think, I've been sitting on this board about ten years and, and I can't remember another emergency situation like this based on our, um, theory of saving money, right? We, we run the trucks hard, we put a little more maintenance into them, we, uh, we figure it out, we buy them used, and I, and I think that we have had a great track record of that. Um, and I think, you know, to have a plan put forward on a truck that died and to realize that we can, we can replace it without changing our budget, it just changes the timing a little, is, is a testament to the, you know, the frugality of what we do. But also that we're gonna expect things like this from time to time that are, that are gonna be a little, a little wrench in the monkey, we don't have a backup truck like this. So, it's one of the choices we make to run our town the way we do, and if, and if, um, we need to do this once in a while, then it's great, and I, I'm glad that we're in a position to do it.
Thank you, thank you. So, I don't think we need a... We don't need a vote on that.
So, I'm gonna dispose of the truck?
Yep.
As outlined.
Yep.
Fiscal warrants.
Oh, you're done?
I think I'm done.
Fiscal warrants.
I'd like to make a motion to accept payroll expense summary dated one fourteen, two thousand fourteen, for the amount of sixty-nine thousand, forty-nine dollars and six cents.
All in favor?
Motion to accept treasurer's warrant dated one fourteen, two thousand fourteen, for the amount of one hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Second.
All in favor? Motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Second.
Second.